Let's go. All right, call this meeting to order, regular council meeting of February twenty first. Okay, roll call, please, Leslie.
Here. Councilperson Sexton.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Goodweiler.
Here.
Stulman.
Here.
I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
See the minutes of this special closed session. What? It's not. Okay. All those in favor to approve tonight's agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the consent agenda consists of the minutes of February sixth. Class C, approving the class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service for the little lights. Approve the fire department staffing changes. And the claims for February twenty first. Motion, please. So we have two retirements and three. Those are moving up in ranks or?
Turned eighteen.
Okay. Cool. Any discussion?
Kathy, do you have any problems with renewing a liquor license for little lights? Does not.
God, I'm trying to call in.
Okay.
Okay. All right, let's vote then, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
All right, for presentations tonight, we, two of them will. We'll do, say hi to Matt first, then we'll. Talk to him. We'll like to introduce Matt Condon. Our new park and rec director. Say hi.
Hi. First off, I just want to say thanks for having me. I just, I've been here for two weeks so far, just want to say I'm loving the community. Right now, I'm just trying to meet everyone, trying to put names with faces, kind of get a feel for what everyone wants in the community. So I can hit the ground running once all the programs start here as soon as it gets a little warmer out, so. I know, I know it's gonna come fast and furious when that happens, so I'm just trying to get ahead, get ahead of everything now, get my feet wet, so. So everything goes smoothly once it starts, so.
All right, welcome board, best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So up next is Sarah Misajewski.
Yep.
At thirty Greenview Circle.
Yes. So I'm just here because, well, I've been talking to Leslie about our water bill was extremely high. Our neighbor came over and said that their backyard was flooding. And it turns out we went in our backyard and our hose was left on. Not sure how it got on, if it was a kid that came and turned it on, or I have kids, I asked them and they said that they did not. However, most of our water bills are between four and five thousand gallons per month. This last one was sixty seven thousand gallons and over a thousand dollars in sewer charges. Most of it obviously did not go down the sewer. So I'm just hoping that there's something, I did fill out a form, did you get that? Yes, I filled out the waiver form that I was supposed to fill out, but. I have all my water bills and I have an email from my neighbor also that explains that she's the one who came over and did it, I don't know if you want me to leave that with you or not, but. Just kind of stayed in the case, but.
Do you have a hose connected to the spigot then?
Yes.
I don't know how that happens, but did ice? Leave that spigot on or turn it on?
No.
I think it was definitely turned on by somebody, I just don't know, I don't know how it got turned on. And the only reason we find out about it is because she came over and held us. I don't know if there's anything else new for me.
So this happens probably once a year or so. Or less often, even, it's rare, but it happens.
We're gonna put, my husband's gonna either pay or somebody or do it himself, he's pretty handy, but a turn on bell for that one inside the house.
Shut it off for the winter?
Yeah. And our, I came from, saw it up there, they always had the outside ones all hooked up on a separate thing that you could turn off and all of that, but that's the piece of this house, so.
So I, I take it you're asking us to forgive the sewer portion of the water?
Well, some of it, obviously not all of it, because we give you some sewer, but some of it, obviously. Like I said, average means about five thousand gallons.
How much money are we talking? Seven dollars per thousand or more?
The, I think the reading was like sixty seven thousand gallons, obviously. I did, I found it when they ran a meter, when they did the meters last month in June, or sorry, in January. They would have read the meters like on the nineteenth and the twentieth, and when they were done, I saw, I ran my normal reports. Knew that there was a problem, I called and left a message on her phone. Saying that I had found a problem, I didn't know she was aware of it, and then I sent the notice out, and I didn't hear from her until she got the bill, and when she got the bill, she called and talked to Adam. So somewhere in that timeframe, but yeah, by the twentieth of January, realized there was a problem.
Well, and in the email, she, the neighbor said that they were gone from the first to the seventh. When they came back, that's when they noticed all the flooding, so it was, it was sometime around the beginning of January, I don't remember the, I think it was. The date that she came over, she said that it was approximately on January eighth when she came over to tell us that we turned it on.
That's a lot of water.
And I understand that obviously the water would be our responsibility because it came for our hose.
Yeah, we've never forgiven the water portion.
Yes, exactly, exactly, and I'm just, I'm just hoping that some relief from the sewer.
I thought we have relieved the sewer.
We have, and I believe in the past, if the sewer is wanted, we get it pretty good.
Didn't we set a new policy for this?
That form is filled out on the policy and it says that water was knowingly, you knowingly watered your sod or had a toilet running and didn't have it repaired and so forth. They had to fill it out, and then we also ask if this possibly is a vandalism, has they, have they called the police, have they turned an insurance claim? Because we would typically be the last to pay if something like that happened. In the past, most of them have been denied because hearing water run out of our, of a garden hose is something you might think you'd hear versus a leaky toilet that doesn't necessarily. Or a water softener that overgenerates.
I don't know, a hose in the middle of the winter, you're not gonna know that for.
Yeah.
Not gonna know. We're fairly confident that.
So the form says, and council approved this form.
Yeah.
Years ago when we did this, because we had some instances that popped up, and it, the first review comes through myself, Matt Gooddale and city administrator. We'll review it, if we review it and feel like it doesn't meet the criteria for consideration, we deny it, if they don't like the response, then they come to you.
Yeah, I've gone through that process.
I just got that form on Friday.
Okay, so.
So I directed, so I directed Ms. Misajewski to pay at least what she normally would pay, and I would turn off the penalty flag because she would get a penalty. For not paying the whole bill, the whole sixteen hundred dollars. So I turned the flag off until a decision is made, and then if the decision is that is denied, I'll put her on a payment plan, and she can make payments for her bill.
All I'd ask is let staff review it and then talk about it. Yeah, so. That would just be my thoughts, is just let us take a look at it, see if it fits the policy you guys passed. If not, then, you know, we'll kind of discuss it from there.
Okay, so this, what we're having tonight is kind of jumping the outside, is that right?
She just wanted to come and discuss the council, discuss the form.
Personally, I'd be in favor of forgiving. Something. So.
We'll get back in touch with Mark then.
All right, staff will review it. Okay, bye.
Do you want to look back to the next one then too, or should we?
Yeah, they deny it, come on back.
Okay.
Call us individually.
Call Roger.
Call Jerry. Thanks for choosing West Branch, by the way.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Okay, next up is a public hearing. On the property tax, the maximum property tax levy for fiscal year twenty twenty four, the next fiscal budget. Is anyone here to address that particular, this particular issue?
I'm gonna read something off real quick, I got an email at three thirty today.
Okay.
So I'll kind of paraphrase, because I don't think they knew I would. Present it forward, but.
Go ahead, this is the public hearing portion.
So email I received from Kathy Krug, she was at. Open house with Bobby Kaufman the other day, so. She had two, I guess, just minor suggestions where I think. Not necessarily happy that the levies going up on two accounts, one. That some of the state backfill is not coming back to help us, so then in theory, we have to find a way to find it somewhere, so she's not happy about that. And she wants counsel to just consider. Not everybody can pay for increases as easily as others, so she's not necessarily in favor of an increase. But I haven't sat down with her to kind of explain. What this property tax levy means either, but for the most part, she's really open minded. But there's a lot in here to kind of paraphrase, but I think she just, she just wants you guys to remember that there are some people in this town that. You know, every dollar counts to them too, so.
Okay. That is a public statement from the public. Anyone else? One online? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. And we will move into the resolution. Resolution. Twenty-three dash twelve dash fourteen, approving the maximum property tax levy. For the fiscal year, July one twenty-three, the June thirtieth twenty-four. Motion, please, anyone?
Second.
I guess to be clear, our. Our increase is thirty-one cents?
This is a little bit different, this is on the non-voted. This is essentially your guys' authority, that you don't have to ask for money from the voters, so. Best way to explain it, it's more of a dollar amount that we propose every year, it's not necessarily, a lot of times we talk. Rates and things like that, but for this specific one, it's about the total dollars you're asking for. And the total dollars we're asking for is that one point seven million dollars is, is what we're asking for.
Which is over a two percent increase.
It's a three, yes.
Two eight percent.
It's a three percent increase. Most of it is coming from regular general levy, and then I don't have. A final liability property self-insurance cost. But the last couple of years, it's gone up by ten percent every year. Insurance adjusters will tell you that things like the derecho. Are having an effect on municipalities' insurance rates, I know there's a lot of debate on. The weather and what that all means, but every, every agent is gonna tell you this is going up for municipalities, so I just did a ten percent as a best guess based on the last couple of years. In terms of employee benefits, we were expecting a ten percent increase, but we only got a five percent increase, so that lowered. How much we were asking for, so when we were talking three weeks ago or four weeks ago, we were thinking benefits would cost us a lot more, and then. Using some in anticipation of the lead service line work that we'll have to do. There's a little bit more flavor going in the water and sewer, so that kind of lowers the FICA and IFRS dollars too. So even though people are getting a raise, you're not really seeing it on the general levy. Or these, these, or this maximum property tax levy. The last note I want to make is on that regular general levy. That is generally the number that I use when I'm talking about changes in our property values or things like that, because it doesn't matter what valuations are, it matters what we get at the eight dollars and ten cents. So when we talk eight dollars and ten cents, we're always talking about regular general.
That's that top number there, one hundred.
The one point two billion, so it's the third, third number.
Top number.
The senate and the house passed a bill to rectify the issues with the twenty thirteen property tax reform bill, the governor signed it this weekend. That number's gonna go down by about twenty-seven thousand or so, if my calculations are correct. The state has not put a specific number to cities yet, that is just my assumption by changing it, changing the rollback factors. So probably be around twenty-seven or thirty thousand less. Basically, what that means for us. We can always go down, we can never go up, but I expect our total number will be instead of one point seven six million, it will be one point seven four million. And that is actually only a one point seven percent increase, I would say. They don't. I think we're doing everything we can to keep that as low as possible. Inflation's at eight percent, and we're only asking for one to three percent more in dollars. And I would say we're also experiencing, when you look at our. Building permits. New construction, the last three years on average, we're getting five percent more in new construction permits on average each year. So when you add all that up, I don't know, without sacrificing any more services that we offer, we're probably looking at the very best number that we can.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
So if we raise. The. Are we still looking at charging individually for? Services?
I think that's up to council, and for me to bring a couple proposals, my thoughts, I guess, are. Can at least be careful, I want to see what the capital improvement plan increases will be, hopefully in April, we'll have. Dave will talk a little bit more today, but hopefully in April, we'll have an estimate of what that costs, then we'll know how many tip dollars we can. Transfer over and how many levy dollars we may have to levy for, or how much water dollars we'll have to ask for. So I don't want to make those assumptions yet until I've got a bigger picture for you guys.
Complicated.
Right. I still think the discussions need to happen, but I don't want to give you those too early.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve this maximum property tax levy. For the next fiscal budget, any other comments, otherwise we'll go. Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stulman? Goodweiler?
Yeah.
All right, back to park and rec, resolution twenty-three dash fifteen. Proving a park and rec management software as a service agreement with RecDesk. Motion, please.
Okay.
Well, this is something that was researched previously. You familiar with it, Jamie's become familiar with it, so.
I can kind of chime in, a couple of things that made us think about this in the last year or two is. Now we've become a larger community, tracking things by spreadsheet is not efficient anymore. And how do you keep track of dollars, you have to individually, this person signs up incorrectly, and then this person signed up one kid and they meant to sign up two. So you're looking at five different things, and you're not necessarily knowing. Which dollar's going to where, which is a very scary thought in my mind. And then in general. When it's under one software, it creates a lot more efficiency, and Leslie can probably give you the minor details in terms of where she's had the help. But I think, in general, hopefully this will streamline the process, and we'll be able to track, just in general. You know, what everyone's signing up for without having to have all these spreadsheets kind of spread around in. Terms of where it's coming from, for some reason, we've charged parks and rec ten thousand dollars a year in water, and we've never really done that for any other department, and. So there's ten thousand that's just been kind of sitting there in that line item. So that's where the fifty eight hundred would come from, is that ten thousand, that for some reasons.
We tried, saying we charged them one time for ten thousand dollars or?
They just send the budget every year.
I think we decided to.
It came from Covey Park.
Yeah, when we started watering, we wanted Covey Park.
We were using to water the fields.
Yeah, because they need to pay for that.
Yeah, so the money was set aside into that, and it's never been expended. It was never determined if that's what was going to for sure happen, but I'm not sure, it's been at least in there for two budgets, maybe three.
So ideally, that money would have been given to the water bill, say the water.
Right now, what, right now, the city. Water, so all of the facilities, it's just, we get, we get a bill, we see our consumption, but it's a zero rate. I think the, the question was, if we're gonna charge one department, why wouldn't we charge the other departments for water? And that's kind of where it stalled, but the money was actually put away for parks and rec, for whatever reason, into a budget line.
So this would pay for the initial purchase, and then there's a.
It would be under a new line item in your budget for technology services. So on the fiscal year twenty-four budget that we've been working on, it's under technology services.
What's, what's the ongoing expense, I guess? Anyway, fifty eight hundred bucks.
Yeah. I, I guess my question would be is. You know, how much research was done in this, is, is it really something you can learn on your own, because I really don't want to pay somebody a thousand dollars a day plus fifty dollars for the.
And some of that.
And travel, lodging expenses.
We've already opted for the online training. So there will be no travel, Jamie's been using it in demo mode, most of the software is pretty intuitive, it's. Swing clip, just do that on the backside, North Liberty also uses the same software. So I had suggested that, you know, you find a contact at North Liberty, and maybe they can help us if we got stuck, but for the most part, they're gonna be with us to set it up. And then going forward, you may use to learn how, learn how to tweak it in the present days.
Most of the trainings come free, it's when you're having a lot of issue and you gotta call somebody. On site to help you, but that's a part of our contract that they have to respond in a certain amount of time. And a guy I used to work with is one of the customer service reps, but I do have somebody's personal cellphone too, if we're having issues.
So the migration, looks like those are one time. Twelve hundred dollar fees.
Yeah, so there's the one twelve hundred dollar fee, and that is to make. This software compatible with what Leslie and Heidi do, so that way it's just a click of a button, all that refreshes. Automatically, and those reports come to Leslie automatically, we didn't do that, then it's, we're almost doing the same thing, where we've got spreadsheets all.
Where does Matt come in, what was, what's Matt's involvement? I guess. He sets up the program and.
He would set up the program, and then basically everyone would just register online, and at the time they're registering, they would have to pay, right now, they don't have to pay, they can register without paying. And gotta get through, and that, that creates extra checking on the backend, so this would eliminate that. This would create all of his rosters, and then he could put them, it, it'll create teams, you, there's many features to it. So anyway, so he'd have real online, real on time recording, but right now, all he can do is capture the registrations, but he sees none of the financial stuff. So this puts all the pieces together for the director, instead of me having part of the pieces, Heidi having part of the pieces, and him having part of the pieces, and put it all together in one.
You can all see it, all see the same information, that's.
Yeah, there's unlimited licenses, so I will learn how to use the system, Jamie will, and Heidi will, for whatever reason, I'll need it for, because when the deposits are made to the bank. They'll collect the payments, they'll send them through our processor, and then I'll receive them, and then I just have to go in and apply the money to our account. So that way, it puts it all in the right buckets for all the different services.
Do they have a, do they have a fee other than the fifty hundred dollars, do they have a fee?
Like a transaction fee?
Yeah.
Over a certain amount.
I believe they do.
Five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, oh, that's, that's for if we have five hundred thousand dollars revenue, yeah, we all have that, yeah. But there is a, I think there is a convenience fee that the user would charge or get charged if they use the system. Like most software, it's like our, like our online billing, if they choose to pay their bill online, it'll tell them, there's an extra, an extra two dollar charge, you want to continue, and they say yes, and go on, but they would check, they would charge.
So with this, how, if somebody wants to pay, say, let's say cash or check. How do they pick, how do they sign up and then pay, do they have to come in the office then, once they've signed up and then pay?
Yes, that was one of the questions we had, we have a demo schedule, a, well, Matt hasn't actually seen it yet, so, and I saw three different software, so they all look the same, I just don't remember which one was which. I know Jamie's been using it, and she's been kind of playing around. But that was one of my questions was, you know, is there a way, because we don't really want them, we want them to pay online as much as they can, because then it's all done, we don't want them to have to come in, but we know we will have that option. I do believe there are, there's some setting that they can say. Think maybe that, maybe it just pins there, I'm not sure, maybe it pins that, the registration, and then it goes, you know, notify Matt, and then he would tell them what they would need to do.
Leslie?
Yes.
If I remember correctly, you think with RecDesk, they would print out some sort of invoice? And then they would bring it into the office where, where they could pay via check or cash, I think that's what I remember of that.
And Heidi was also in on that.
And then I was reading this credit card processing, what it sounds like is they actually don't do that, but what they do do is. They pair with whatever gateway we use now, and so whatever, like when you pay your water bill by credit card or whatever, it's the same pop, same.
Colton, that's correct, they would use global payments, payments, which is what we use now as the gateway for our credit card charges.
So they're, they're compatible then? So have we gone to credit card fee for using a credit card, have we gone to that yet?
We have not, Heidi has been trying, we, we have some other issues on another, I mean, maybe similar related, we're getting charged right now an extra fee because we're not. I don't want to use the wrong word, some sort of.
PCI.
Guy compliant, and Nick and Heidi are gonna work through that process, and I've asked our software vendor if we can charge credit card fees on the backend, they said yes, it has to be a GLB type transaction, which is non-utility. And it's a slip of a. And it's a slip of a switch, but what I'm trying to determine, and Heidi has to do this, is what is the percentage? Is it three percent, five percent? I don't want to just like back it up. I want to know what the average is. When I go places, it's typically three percent, but I don't know if that's just average. So I'm trying to find that out. But yes, we will. You know, I'll bring back the proposal to you and then you can let me know if you want us to charge credit card fees for certain services. I'm hoping we can do it for utility billing, but they told me it was GLB only and that's not that's not the same thing as a utility. Different type of service. So I'm still working on it.
Yeah, I, I just know through our business, we get, you know, you get charged, sometimes you get charged transaction fee, you get, you know, they, they have all kinds of fees they want to draw, yeah.
It's getting expensive.
Using their service.
Eliminate some of those fees.
Okay, well, I think this is a, gonna help tremendously for staff by the organization. So I think I think it's we should.
Rather pricey.
If we don't like it after a year, I guess. How do you?
Right.
Basically, year by year.
Okay. Well, maybe the comments on, uh, Rec Desk, adopting Rec Desk as our rec as a software. Let's go ahead and vote, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yeah.
Bowman?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Good caller.
Yeah. How soon can that get started?
We have a meeting scheduled next, uh, two, next Monday at two o'clock for our initiative call.
It'd be nice to be ready to go for summer programs, but sometimes the programs need to talk to each other correctly. So it's and with Matt being new, it's kind of hard to force his all this time to get this done. So. But yeah, the goal would be online for the programs that we're advertising in the summer. So and then fall. That's the goal.
All right, thank you. Okay, East Side Water Main Replacement Project. Dave, I'd like Dave to tell us about it first of all, and then we have a resolution to get it going.
Should have some drawings in your package already, but I'll hand out another drawing. It's the phase two. You can see where that fits in with this project. All phase two would be a follow-up that we would apply for SRF funds. And try to do that the following year, so. Phase two and pink, yes. The current phase is in light blue. And we've also included the, uh, the cost estimate in the lower left-hand corner. So the current phase is noted as in light blue, includes most of Sixth Street, uh, north of Maine. We have the section of Main Street between Fourth Street and Fifth Street. That's to finish off the segment that we had done previously to upsize that main. And we have some, uh, work that we're doing down on First Street, you know, that goes past the Mercy Clinic and connects in south of the BP. So, um, all, all in all, a pretty short, compact project, about a million one. We do have a section of College Street that, uh, between the Fifth Street and Sixth Street, we'd be looking to reconstruct as part of this project. Previously, when we were looking at this, we were trying to do a little bit more street reconstruction, but it's been scaled back slightly. And, uh, one of the things that I will note, um, you probably saw this in the, uh, the plans, if you looked at what we were doing, um, the water main is, uh, at the back of curb, um, on Sixth Street. A lot of large trees that are impacted there. So we have tried to keep that as close as we can, but we need to maintain certain distances from other utilities. And, uh, we have, um, certain requirements that limit us from getting too close to the sewer, for example. Um, because of the type of pipe that was used on the sewer. So unless we were to make that a water main material, we can't construct that. We can't move it closer. We start to get to a point where it doesn't make sense to throw that sort of money at something you don't realize any cost savings. Um, I know Matt and I have both been out looking at those trees and I think your assessment there are some that probably aren't doing all that well to begin with. So, um, while it's unfortunate that, uh, that's where we need to put the water main in order to upsize it, um, there, there's a possibility that some of those trees wouldn't last all that much longer anyhow. So we're we're trying to, uh, be sensitive to that, but in this situation, uh, where the water main is to go, there really isn't a whole lot of options. It's in the street right of there, so. Wanted to point that out upfront. Um, as far as schedule, there was a schedule in your packet. Um, this can go as quickly as we want it to go. As, uh, setting the bid schedule tonight would be the next agenda item. Um, we also could hold off on this a little bit if we wanted to. There were some things that you were looking at in the packet that now reason for concern that we need to reevaluate. But, um, we do have this ready to go. And part of the reason is that as we look at the roundabout and we look at this project and the, uh, creek widening, we have, uh, funds that we're trying to get to cover all those. And then we have a certain amount of time we have we need to spend those. So we want to make sure that we catch it on the front end to be able to pay the bills and not go too quickly so that we run out of time on the back end if we get delayed further on the last project we're trying to include here. So that's the overview. If anybody has any questions, we'd be happy.
We didn't include green gills in any of this. And there are a big section in green. So when you did east side?
Um, so in pink, I see there's storms over. This is storms who are also on the west side of Sixth Street.
Yes, that's correct. So there's storm sewer that's behind the back of curb now, a little bit further out in order to make room and keep the water main in the right of way. We're looking at moving that storm sewer right at the back of curb. And that storm sewer is not in great condition anyhow. So it made sense to improve that, move it in closer and create some water main in that section. For the same separation requirements for sanitary as we do storm. Um, if we build a storm with the current materials, we can get a little bit closer. That's part of that reason is to one upsize or to improve the, the condition of the storm sewer and the others to make room.
What about service lines to homes? How would that be handled?
So we have new services coming off the main and we go at least to the curb stop. And as we come across services that are lead, that's a call we'll have to make in the field. Um, that is something that we could do is you put a a certain number in there, it's a quantity. And if we come across them, use it. If we don't, we don't use them. So certainly that's available if we want to do that, or we could do it on a case-by-case basis as a change order.
Do you have any feel for if it's lead over there or not? It's the oldest part of town.
Yeah, I mean, there's, uh, that's Sixth Street.
Sixth Street is newer than fifties or fifty, fifty, sixty then?
Well, it's in the sixties. I would say if we're gonna be replacing the water water main, the water services from there to the curb stop, at that point, we've done our, we've done our share. It's not our responsibility to replace it from from the
They, yeah.
curb stop forward.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just curious.
No, but there was a grant or something, wasn't there? There was some program.
That's, that's not.
But didn't we think that we can actually find the homes that right? And then they can go back and maybe do that grant or whatever.
I don't know if there's like a single home type agreement or if it's something
So currently, the, uh, way they have that structured, Jody, is that the state revolving fund receives money from the federal government, the bipartisan restructuring law. Uh, those bill funds are used through the SRF and they have to have a certain percent of loan forgiveness. So it's not an actual grant, but a loan forgiveness program. So if you qualify, there's a socioeconomic scoring tool that they've developed along with the map. That shows by census tract what that socioeconomic score is. If you're eleven or higher on your score showing need, then you're eligible for loan forgiveness. And they would do up to ninety percent loan forgiveness on that. They haven't fully developed a program. March, they're supposed to come out with a, uh, three-page, um, application process that, that will go through. It'll be a reduced version of the intended use plan. Um, I'm working with DNR to develop this. We have a couple of pilot projects we're working on. Have a meeting on Thursday to go through it again a little bit more. But uh, what it amounts to is that if you reach that level of socioeconomic need and you put together a program, they have to give away forty percent of that money they received from the bipartisan restructuring law as forgivable loan. And so you get the SRF loan, you go through the project. Ones that you don't know, you just put them as unknown. You assume you're going to have to do them. And you go out, if you dig it up, and you find out that's not a lead service, then you don't do it and don't spend the money on that service to go to the next one. So they're, they're working through the details now, but that's the general outline of what they plan to do. Uh, they should have a lot more information out in the next couple of months.
So score taking into account the entire town?
It's based on census tract. Or based on census tract.
So that's gonna be like, we have that covers like eighty percent. And then there's another one that covers a small portion, but basically the whole town for, you know.
Okay, we should we should have some, because coming down the road, the feds are gonna make us replace all this lead line when we find it. That's kind of the, the whole, whole idea behind tracking these lead line.
Yes. So some of the inputs to this application are whether or not it's a private line, um, you know, from the corp stop to the curb stop or whether it's city-owned. All of these things come into play, but essentially they're, they're going from the out, outside of the building to the corp stop on the water main. That's the part that they'll give a forgivable loan for. And that's the part that we're required to replace under this rule that they've come out with. So, um, we can't do anything from the outside of the house to the inside, even the meter. None of that's covered. So you might have a short piece that's from the foundation inside to the meter that's lead. That doesn't get touched by this rule because that's a plumbing code issue. So it's, it's kind of weird how they decided to go about that, but that's the rule that is.
So is this something that everybody that be in, uh, in this replacement? Anybody, we should be giving them letters saying that the fact that we're, you know, we may find lead and that there's gonna be some kind of a may be some kind of a charge for replacing that lead?
Yes, anything that's impacted by the project, it would be good to notify the property owners. That's a potential. That would be looking to, at least replace the curb stop for now until we get our inventory done. If we decide we want to get that replaced altogether, we'll at least know whether it's lead or not based on this project. If they want to complete it, they can. There's no guarantee that we would get forgivable loan. And if the city decides to charge the user back for it, that's certainly something that's it would do. So it may be to their advantage to, uh, get it replaced by a plumber while we have it exposed from curb stop to the house. Um, you don't know, I, I can take a look at the socioeconomic scoring on the, uh, the map and let you know if you're even eligible.
Is that something that we could get, get a price and that could be done as we're there through the city instead of, uh?
If, if we have it bid as a per each, uh, for example, as long as it's within twenty to forty feet is one item, forty to sixty is another item. We're gonna have categories. And we bid a few of those. And the homeowner decides they want to have the city included in the project, we could just increase our quantity by one and have it done. And then we just need to determine whether we're going to have it in reverse the city or if that's just something the city has decided to cover. So uh, that, that's a, a decision we'll have to talk through, but there are ways that we could do it in the project.
Well, because I kind of look at this as the beginning of our our finding the lead. And once we get to the point where the feds are gonna make us change the lead, then we shouldn't be giving these people free, free lines if everybody else has lead and you have to pay for their lines. So that's kind of where I'm going with it.
Well, except that we're having a project that we're doing that to the curb stop. We're never gonna replace from the curb stop to the house. That's not our line. That's theirs.
Right.
You know, this was a project that we were gonna do regardless of this lead thing.
Right.
And it so that is not fair that they're getting theirs for free.
Right.
And it is fair because they had crappy water lines for so many years while everybody else had nice No, you got, you got a nice one. You may not have any pressure, but it's got, it's good.
Timeline. So tonight we set up public hearing date and a bid date.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, it should be on, at the schedule on the agenda.
Right, better. From there, Martin set out, set out plans and specs and advertised for them.
If we decide to go that quickly, we can. Um, we have things ready to go. So I've got, I had in some things on the service line. I can make that change pretty quickly and put that in it. We think we want to do that and make it available to the residents.
I think there might be some residents that why they have their front yard already tore up, go all the way to the house. Why do it twice?
Two years later or one year later?
Yeah. We, we're pretty sure that it's gonna have to be eliminated at some point.
Well, I didn't look at materials then. Are they using they using plastic with tracer wires or everything?
Yes.
Some of that would probably, would some of that end up being boring then? Or would they dig it up and all, all the way in, you think?
Well, there is a section that we could consider boring. That's by the Mercy Clinic. And I don't know, we're still talking with the property owner to get that nailed down, but for the most part, everything is open to.
Yeah. Um, trying to think of anything else I can have. Maggie, where?
Yeah.
How's they doing? The staff? So what, so in conjunction with the bids, we would need to get started on the bond.
Correct. So we're talking.
Know what the roundabout's gonna be. And we will know what this is gonna be.
April seventeenth, tentatively she will be here. Talk over the final financing plan.
It's a rough estimate of the widening, creek widening. So those things could be lined up for the final ask for the bond. I, I did call Kevin when I learned of all this last week and said, how does this happen? Well, I think he thinks they can move in conjunction with the bids and the estimate.
Normally, we do the bonds. Normally, we do the bonds. We have the project bid. We know what the construction amount is. We know what the total project cost is. We put a contingency on and we bond for that amount. For three projects, we're going to have two-thirds of that cost accounted for because we won't have widening bid yet, but we'll have the estimate we can use. And with a contingency on the other two projects, that should hopefully be enough to cover any variation.
Okay, so phase one would possibly happen as early as the spring. What are we looking at for phase two?
We would apply for the IUP. That's the intended use plan through the SRF. There's about a six-month period and we'll put the application in and notified. And there's about another six months of environmental clearance. So about this time next year, we'd be ready to bid the next project.
So it could be this year and next year.
Wow. That be all under one bond, you think? Or would you do a second bond?
Do separate. So we're gonna try and do the SRF because of the low interest and it has the extra requirements, which is why it's behind the other.
Did you say we're born under the trees? That?
No.
We're gonna lose all of our trees going up Sixth Street?
Maybe not all of them.
It's, uh, so if you look at it on the west side. Looks like they're on the east side of the college.
Did that because of the trees? Specifically?
As far as, uh, switching sides?
Yeah.
Uh, it's
No.
There were trees on both sides. Uh, we were trying to um, stay within the area that we could install the water main with least amount of impact, but obviously trees on both sides were going to going to impact somebody.
I mean. Can't have it all, Jody.
Like, trees are good.
Trees are getting old, and we could.
They're getting old, and we've taken quite a few down over there because of it. I understand that, but. There's a lot of residents over there that think that those are their trees. Which they aren't, I know, they're in the right of way.
Yeah, well, they're not gonna take care of it when it needs to be cut down. They're not doing that anyway.
He had the pleasure of counsel to direct that.
We heard some criticism when we did the sidewalk, we got the trees. Yeah, we got over it.
I don't think the one on the end of Sixth Street don't get over it.
If you replace the sewer, you can get slightly closer, but um it has to be a water main material, water main joints.
It doesn't really matter what the water main.
So if you look at what we did on College Street on the first phase, we replaced the storm sewer with water main material, so we can get close enough that we can avoid some impacts, but.
It all comes down to whether you use whatever for the water main, it doesn't matter how. All about the sewer.
Right.
Well, this is not getting any cheaper, so.
Yeah, we've been talking about this for two years.
We did just bid a project two weeks ago in Lisbon that's very similar, about three million dollars with the water main replacements. And that came in with a pretty competitive bids, we had seven bidders interested in it, so that was. Indicating that we had a pretty good bid climate, that's also part of the reason we wanted to get this out quickly.
Okay, let's see, move forward. That all for our discussion, guys?
Yep.
You have a questions for Dave?
So once we decide we can move forward with it.
I'm for it.
There's no reason to wait.
The next items. Next items.
It took us two years to get to this point.
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna say.
Who says government moves slow?
Sounds like Maggie's on board.
We do have a. We have about five weeks in here for the bid schedule, so if there are some things that come up and we need to make some modifications, we can do that by addendum to the plan, so if somebody. Yours from somebody, or there's a big concern, and we need to make some minor adjustments, we can still do that before bid time.
All right, uh thank you, Dave, we're gonna move on to the next resolution. Resolution twenty-three dash sixteen is ordering construction of certain public improvements. Approving preliminary plans and fixing the date for the hearing thereon. Taking of bids and for the improvements known as the Eastside Water Main Project.
Smooth.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion final before we vote?
Helpful person Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
No going back.
Um traffic cameras, um this is interesting. Something to say.
Uh I talked with Kevin, the reason why it's a little bit awkward for the public is. Last week, there's been legislation to ban traffic cameras in the exact way that we are talking about today. Um I talked with Kevin Olson, and he said that generally every year they're trying to do something. So he's comfortable with you guys continuing the discussion, um he doesn't feel that it would be. A major waste of our time to do some, a little bit more research, but obviously, before we take. Take the bull by the horns, we'll wanna see what state legislature passes.
The only thing I have to say is, I refuse to go shop in Leclerc because I paid them two traffic fines. From their cameras. Sorry, Bruce, I know that's where you park your boat. Really? Anyway, I'll get over it, I'm just a little worried about. If someone's driving past West Branch, they get a bunch of speeding tickets over the years through in front of us, it's. What, seventy on that side, and seventy on that side, you gotta slow down to sixty-five, that's hard to do. We want a five-mile or two-mile little section. They're gonna be mad at West Branch.
We don't slow down. Seventy-three here.
Sixty-five in Leclerc. And I was doing. Seventy-six. I'll get over it.
As far as the people in West Branch, if we put it on the bridge, you're getting on the ramp going that way, you're getting on the ramp going that.
Yeah, it's not awesome.
You never run underneath the. In any way.
So I guess we'll do a little bit of research and see where it leads.
I hate his no-brainer.
I'm probably not, I'm probably not for it, but that's me.
You don't get to vote.
I know. All right, what else we got?
Well.
Moving on.
Are we gonna, are we gonna give him an amount of time that he's gonna work on this? I mean, is that ten hours or fifty hours or? How much time do we want to let him research it? I think that's, that's. Question we should be answering is, how much time do I want him to spend?
What do you want the research? Guess that would be the question, you know, the time table.
Well, there's a charge, how much money, I mean, I sent my check to Maryland, it was a company out of Maryland that administered this traffic camera. And they probably get a cut of the eighty dollars for buying.
See, they're acting the same way, they don't.
Really, huh? It's their cameras, they maintain them, they.
So this is one of those tough things, here's one of. In a public setting, what we need to say we're willing to gain is. We're willing to gain public safety, and we want people to slow down, and we want to try to make. This stretch of highway from West Liberty to the Charlotte Auction, that's like Hell's Highway. Get it to slow down a little bit, and maybe uh reduce the fatal accidents and 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 help uh. Keeping our emergency crews off the interstate, and just making this chunk of interstate safer. What?
That all sounds great.
It's not a great stretch.
Terms, I guess my thought is at least something that would at least be able to. You know, whether it's a memo or something to give pros and cons of cities that are doing it, pros and cons of the hoops that you gotta go through. Pros and cons of the maintenance of, does that mean we're subject to traffic stops and all that stuff? I think that would be something that would give you a bigger picture on. On what it all entails versus just an idea, so I don't know if I could put hours behind it, but I think. Something that you could do in a page or two with a couple of resources behind it would be a start.
And in a public setting, our our stance is going to be. All we need this project to do is to pay for itself.
In a public setting, alright.
I personally don't know that I'm real in favor of it, because I grew up. With the town of West Branch being known for being. The police, the.
Yeah.
Well, anyhow. Um, and I really don't want to go back to that, you don't want to go to West Branch. Or you don't want to pass under the West Branch Bridge. I really don't want to.
Think about this, seventy miles an hour.
Right.
Well, you're not gonna get a ticket unless you're going eleven, eleven miles over. So you're going eighty-one miles an hour down the down the stretch of road right here. If you can't control yourself long enough, knowing that there's a camera there, to slow down to to to. Not seventy-five, not seventy-nine, no, you could go eighty miles an hour and it's still okay.
I'm not talking mean. It's just we're gonna, down in West Branch is gonna be known.
No.
So what you're saying is they're not gonna come to West Branch because they can't.
Well, that's what I said about Leclerc, but like I said, I'll get over it.
And that would be, I know Chief's not on, that would be his hesitancy, is they've worked really hard to have a better image in this community. So that's why you will never see him speak kind of in favor or against it, it's kind of very stand-up-ish, but. Not everything is perfect, that's for you guys to help guide us in that direction.
I mean, what Coleman says, I totally agree with all of that. But that's not what the people going from Iowa City to Davenport are gonna say.
Go through West Liberty and through Muscatine, see how they like that.
Nichols used to be, Nichols, you wanted to avoid Nichols in a bad way, a lot of times.
I think, I think it would be advantageous to learn a little bit more about. The pros and cons of the test. I mean, it's probably not cut and dry, but cameras up, we don't do anything, we get a a check every month or something because all these speeders. Probably not the way it works.
Right, a lot of court cases.
Well, yeah, I'm sure there is.
So.
Might have to hire another operator.
I've done a tiny bit of research, my understanding is, is once these people are out of state. They they either just send the check, or they don't show up at all, and if they don't show up at all, most of these companies that you work with. If it's non-prosecutable and they don't collect any money, then they don't charge you.
Is that so? Tom's got a ticket, he's sitting on it.
My mother-in-law's got one in Sioux County from twenty years ago, she was eight. And I told her, we're not paying that because we're never going back.
Can't go back Arizona. We're gonna warn off my wrath, but by no joke.
Alright. Alright, let's move on. Uh future annexation, sounds like there's some interest on a couple of different fronts. Start off.
Yes, um I'll speak in vague when that developer is ready. And when that property owner is ready, they're more than willing to announce where and what the scope of that is. I do want to have some preliminary concept maps before presenting it officially. Um and I have talked with you a little bit, um in time to time when you stop in the office. Uh but there's strong likelihood of annexation happening probably in the next thirty to fifty days, us getting a packet for an application. So I want to go over our city code really quick, and then wanted to go over just my general direction I had for developers. Cause we've never talked about annexation policies or what what we should do. Um so I kind of utilize, I'll just jump into that part, I utilized a little bit of Dave's expertise and what they've done and so on. And so, couple of things that when these development firms came in about somebody selling land. Um basically, the couple of things I said was, if new sewer line is needed, developer will pay fifty percent. Um sewer connection fees would hopefully be the the funding source on our fifty percent. If a new water line or booster, same thing, fifty-fifty water connection fees. Um, certain phases are complete, gravel or mud roads must be reconstructed to city standards. Um the developer will pay fifty percent, and then that'll be passed through through TIF rebates. As street connection fees are not allowed in the state of Iowa. Um new parcels attached to existing city residential properties must have the same zoning to encourage conformity. With existing residential neighborhoods, for example. Um if you've got parcels leaning up to something that's R1, those first adjoining parcels should be R1. Um after that, then that's kind of up the developer to make their ass to the Planning and Zoning Board and City Council. Dedicated trail space is required, and then ten percent green space is required by city code. Just want to make sure I'm representing you guys as best as I can, because it took off, like with. It took off, so not even enough time to talk to you guys about it, I just want to make sure I'm representing you. Or if there's anything that you guys feel is out of line, because even if this doesn't go through, something else will. You know. So probably know more can. Could happen, so.
Is this gonna affect both dirt roads?
Yes.
Well, not the northern dirt.
North and the north south.
Cedar Johnson.
And also.
East west.
Yeah, east west down.
Well, they obviously wouldn't do it first thing, but um I don't know, fifty percent complete or, you know, something like that.
So the, will that one have to go? Concrete?
If it's annexed in the city.
What would the road be? And be like. So we can do Chippens, you know, and Ask.
No.
So I guess, I guess one of the questions I would have. Annexes in is, this could possibly happen in the next year or two, where's that put us in our CIP? Cause we've got a bunch of projects that we want to get done, and this just adds more cost. All right.
Uh it's a good question, um I would have to make sure Maggie answers that. Um, and same with Kevin, because there are times, depending on how things are rebated, it doesn't affect your debt limit. Um and then I would say. It's always a couple of years later when property values are on the tax rolls for the constitutional debt limit. Um, so I don't want to. I guess that's a question I gotta research further before. Saying that, but I'm assuming if it's water, it's gonna be the water revenue. Um assuming if it's sewer, it's gonna be sewer revenue, so my guess is. Those wouldn't be on our debt limit, nor would a rebate, but I want to make sure I'm clear before I say that's true. But that would be my hunch.
I would also might demand that trails actually get constructed instead of just graded and. And then we have the building later.
That could be a little touch and go, though, why are you forcing this guy to when you're forcing anybody else to?
Well, Blaine is, he's gonna grade that trail, he's gonna pave it.
I mean, I'm, I wholeheartedly agree.
We need to start.
Cause I just want that trail to get the other guys to do it, but.
We didn't force them to, and now we're gonna all have to pay.
Kind of like Jerry said, you know, with the growth, if that really does go through, and that whole block. Ends up being pulled into the city. Cedar Johnson, that little square, two mile stretch of Cedar Johnson that we've got right now. It's not gonna hold up. So there's a whole lot of ruins.
Well, right now, it's on the slate for twenty-seven-ish.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
So. Seems like a long way.
Yeah.
So, like I talked to Adam, one of my concerns was. Like when. We were dealing with the mobile home parks in Iowa City, we went and talked to the city about annexing in, when you go through that, they. When you go do that, they bring this big old binder out and they start flipping pages and they got roads and how the sewers all connect together and the waters and stuff planned out for farm field amongst farm field amongst farm field. And I think the, before we just let the developer start making a bunch of culsacks and doing whatever he's gonna do to to make it as cheap as he can, you know, we need to try to figure out how's this going to fit into the puzzle? When we grow this way, when we grow that way, when we grow that way, you know, whether it ever happens or, you know, in our lifetime.
Splayed it as residential in our long-range language.
Yeah, but still there needs to be ways that we're gonna be able to hook infrastructure to it to and, and, you know, streets run through like they should. You don't have like up there, you go up there hiffing and you go back up there behind the other side of the road, you get lost up in there, it's one culsack after another, you can't get turned around, you have to pull your phone out, you're you see the road and you don't know how to get to it.
Okay. Is that all we need to chat about on annexation?
Uh, and then just the general explanation of how it goes. Um, I'll kinda spare you on the small details, but generally we get an annexation request. You guys will set a public hearing, so Planning and Zoning. And we also, so you'll go through the normal setting of public hearing, then you'll hear it, approved. Um, zoning must come after, you've gotta annex first before you do any type of zoning. And then the, the other thing that's added to it is a consultation meeting with the county board of supervisors, the way the state law is written, they can either say yes or no comment. Dead serious, that's what the state code says, no comment, so.
So the county supervisor comes at the end after it's all been.
No, in the middle of all these hearings, but the city or the state code favors the city um, for whatever reason when it was made, so um, essentially when we annex, you know, obviously we wanna answer questions, but I know there's a fear that our neighbor in county wants to have too much control and that is not necessarily the case.
We better hurry up if there's a storm before there's fate changing, they don't like anything to be in the favor of the city.
So at the same time, we would have to, um, put it in an urban renewal plan also. Any new development.
Correct, if we were wanting to do, yep, rebates, we'd have to do, yep, there'd be a lot of public hearings going on, so.
Okay. Um, let's move on. If I don't have something, um, go on, Adam, you got anything to say in city administration report?
Yeah, we talked a little bit about lead service lines, um, but I guess the number one thing to do is talk about is thanking Monica Tylee, she's been helping us clean at town hall while we've been in the interim. Matt's ready to kinda take over and so I know that wasn't necessarily approved before, but we needed somebody to clean in the interim, I clean some weekends. Um, but Monica did an excellent job for us, so I just wanna thank her for helping us being in a tight spot, so.
Kevin's gone, Dave, anything else?
We have a pre-construction meeting on Thursday of next week, uh, Johnson County on the Roundabout Project, so I'll be attending that. I'll report back, um, schedule as soon as I hear more. Um, West Water Plant, they continue to work, this week they're off, the company might have a safety meeting, but they should be back next week, continue to work on that project. Um, we need to do some pumping to lower the first cell lagoon so we can do some work on a manhole. They're transferring flow, um, other than that, uh, the project continues to move along. Weather hasn't been great, but they're doing what they can while they have the opportunity, so.
Are they on schedule? Ish?
Yeah, for the most part, they're on schedule with what I thought they would be, uh, you know, they've got the sledge haul, they've got the, uh, structure started, they'll make a pretty good headway once the weather improves a little bit, they haven't been able to do a lot with concrete work just because of temperatures, but um, once they get the, uh, the flow issue straightened out and get some flexibility, they'll be able to move up a little bit quicker.
I have a two-part question.
Yes.
For you. Um, and it's involved you, Dave. Is there do they schedule another variance meeting for Bronnic Park or whatever that, whatever that abatement or whatever, condemnation?
The commission should be meeting later this, I think it's in March.
Well, I, I've heard it was forty days after.
I think it's, uh, late March is when we got rescheduled.
Are we gonna affect the bats?
Not with the meeting, but, uh, so, uh, what we, maybe like an hour is if we can get, uh, some agreement that we're under ten acres on the area that we're deserving the trees, a lot of the forest habitat isn't subject to uh, bat roosting, so if we can get that agreed to, we wouldn't necessarily need to beat that April first deadline. That's the, the backup plan on that.
Okay.
We're, we're working through it, yeah, uh, if it comes down to it and we have to do a study, um, that might be something we need to do if we wanna take a look at, uh, in the next couple of weeks to find out we aren't able to get that study done and with impact schedule, we might be able to take a look at the other properties and get those cut down before April first, it's just, it seems, oh, two feet above the ground, dropping the trees, so that's maybe true.
How big around are those trees?
Um, if they're, so five inches is what they usually like to see, um, we go down to three inches just to make sure we don't have issues, so usually the trees in inches are larger, we'll cut down two feet or lower to the ground.
Um, just what happened was on that board, it asked the two bankers, two farmers, two business men, two real estate agents. And there was, and one of the real estate agents that was on it didn't renew their license and couldn't get anybody else, and so I because I have to meet with Dave anyway on this project, he told me what happened, so I brought that up, so we're in the process of trying to update, having some spare members so that this doesn't happen again, but they told me this could be a fairly big deal.
All right, thank you, Dave. City staff, anyone, Matt? Heidi? Chief? C and an O? All right? What? Oh, sorry about that, Matt, C and F, oh, gee.
They both shook their head no.
Right. Wasn't even looking at you. I will. Yeah, Matt, man, all right.
Just make a poor Matt.
Um mayor and council. I'm gonna open nothing on my end.
I would, I would just like to say thanks to the Public Works, I know you guys have gotten some some, uh, flack about your snow plowing. Um, a lot of people don't realize what it takes to plow snow. Um, I think you guys do an excellent job. Um I know some people think you do a lot of speeding, but I guess the way I look at it, if you can watch your speed and run the controls and make sure you don't run over a mailbox and dump the curb all at the same time.
You better hire.
You can say it, but.
There's bound to be a mailbox every winter.
Oh, it's funny, that happened.
Wife wanted to know what happened to our sign, I said, well, just check the camera. So we watched the camera and snow plows coming down and praying, that was that
The wet snow.
The wet heavy snow and this nice band coming off the blade and the next thing the sign is laying on the ground.
All right, anybody else? Uh, most of you enjoyed it, anyone? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.